Just a word of thanks to all the volunteers that put together the parade on the rodeo this year. Call to the public, Karen?
Bill Allen.
Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to report briefly on the status of new members for the Water Advisory Committee. Tony Geiger has been elected chairman, Nancy Weiss vice chairman, and I'm stepping down for so. However, I have spoken with the individual in charge of Daisy Mountain Fire Department regarding members from the Desert Hills area. He assured me that he could find somebody that would be more than happy to serve him. We also have a request for a member from the town of Carefree. So we've got hopefully two, maybe three individuals to come before the council for our appointment, and we'll move forward with that as quickly as we possibly can. Thank you.
That's wonderful. I thought Tony was from Carefree.
He is.
So you're going to add another person to the council?
Yes.
Thank you, Karen. Call of the public still open?
I don't know if it's too busy.
Does anyone wish to speak on the call of the public that is still open? Anybody? Town manager open?
Nothing at this time.
Before council moves into the consent of the general agenda, I believe I speak for the council, Graham. We received a lot of phone calls on Saturday night regarding a concert that was at the rodeo, and not specifically concert, but the noise that was being heard at the concert. And I just want to let anyone here that called the mayor or the council that I asked the town manager to ask the staff to come up with recommendations regarding the rodeo grounds, to bring it to council, and we will have a public workshop first on that matter. But it's just to let everybody know that we're inconvenienced for lack of anywhere by the sound of volumes that council is already. Okay. On to consent. Motion to approve the March 7, 2016, letter of council meeting. A motion to approve, please, someone?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say yes.
Aye.
Opposed, the highest priority of the council. Excuse me, I want to jump around a little bit here to take some of what I would describe as the EDF plans under the town. Sorry. We're going to go to agenda number four, Marshall, if you can, from the president, please, and ask council's discussion and approval of resolution, laws, statute, Act 09, adopting an official fire multi-hazard mitigation plan for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Vice Mayor of the council. The jurisdictional summary for the town of Cape Creek, Maricopa County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan is in review. The plan is updated every five years. It's a plan that we worked on with the county. It's approximately a six-month process. It's going to include, it has to be adopted with resolution by the council, and it will go back to Maricopa County, and then they will go to FEMA with it. I would have to answer any questions you may have.
Just to Marshall, I noticed that there's a staff member listed in the presentation that's moved over to the town. Do you think I can get that current?
I understand that, sir. Again, with all due respect, Mayor Vice Mayor, the plan is six months in the making, and when it goes to FEMA, when it goes to the county as a prepared document, she's the one that worked on it, which is why I had it on.
I had an additional question, that is, the list of natural, non-natural, natural hazards that might affect the community of Carefree, drought, floods, things like that. Are haboos, I think they're called haboos, are they covered on the wind? And you know, something that could personally affect the town.
They take off of FEMA guideline sheet, what is classified as a potential subsidence and that type of thing. Haboos are what's in there. I think wind, it did come up as a question. I do believe wind, chief, chief said, oh, sorry. I believe wind covered on, did come up as a question of the preparations.
Any other questions from council? Anything else?
I have, I have. Based on the first page, some of it was answered, but this is something that's ongoing and done since 2000. It's every five years?
Every five years it's updated with a resolution, but every two years it will go through.
Okay. What I see is dates that appear to be much older than that. The 2009 town of Cape Creek Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan is currently being updated. So it's been that long since it's been updated. 2008, the town of Cape Creek Master Water Plant. Some of these are old. They don't need to be updated. They should be updated. I'm just asking the question, if this is going to be a five-year plan? If it's been that long since it's been updated, and it's going to spill over into this new plan for the next five years, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So I don't understand.
Sure. The items are documented within the mitigation plan, or items that were addressed within the initial plan. Some of those documents have been upgraded, as you said, others have not. It is possible that I failed to update one or two of them. Items that were still listed though, were all accurate items that were listed within the mitigation plan.
Okay, I'm not sure I fully understand what you're saying. So you're saying there's something, for example, the town, 2005 town of Cape Creek general plan, which is currently being updated because it's a tender type of plan, is being done. That I understand. Town of Cape Creek, the MFP response plan has not been updated since 2008, based on what you have here. And there's been a lot of construction, a lot of change, and a lot more holes. So are you saying that's not been updated yet? Or is being updated? Or it doesn't need to be updated?
Again, council, vice mayor, mayor, member of council, the plan is the multi-hazard mitigation plan. The data that we used to generate the multi-hazard mitigation plan, I have to go to each department and get whichever data they give us. At the time I went to the engineer, that was the data that appears most current, and that's what we used.
The 2008 plan? Okay, so we don't update them to make sure that we're on top of all the building that's taking place. For example, the dispute between a builder and an existing building, which we've all recently gone through, has with it a belief between the engineers that there might be a major flood downstream, and that's not taken into consideration at all with regards to a rural wash. Or, just what I'm saying, I'm trying to understand why we don't update fresh construction and its impact.
And I do believe, Mr. Mayor Vice Mayor, councilor, I believe that the flood mitigation plan, from engineering, most likely cover that type of issue, but again, will be covered in the multi-hazard mitigation program.
These two are through our council.
I guess number five, what I see is a review of the existing Cape Creek general plan. So we need to determine how these documents help limit development in hazardous areas. Modify with additional guideline regulations, land use techniques, as necessary, in limited state statutes while respecting private property rights and moving up flooding, and so on and so forth. If that's one of the descriptors that we have to come under, and it hasn't been updated since 2008, then how do you know that we know all that?
You know the lines of data that we have on our hands. Now, the data that was in hand from Portland.
We're out of my heart, a bit of a question like this, but looking in here and then talking about FEMA quite a bit, and addressing areas that are more ability areas. And I think in terms of a typical wash where it goes down there, many years ago, we had a whole lot of water go through there, and some issues happened, and we formed a neighborhood group, a barrel taxi thing, and then they were supposed to get money from the feds to fix that, mitigate that issue. And then the feds timed when they're running out because they didn't have the money, so those people are still sitting down there. Are things like that get high priority in a plan like this? Or, I'm a little weary of counting on Washington to do anything, because they can't seem to get, well, the old thing about finding it with both hands, is an issue in my opinion.
The purpose of having a multi-hazard mitigation program is in the event of an emergency, in the event of declaring emergency through state and through FEMA, this is a tool that can be used to help go and get grants as a kind of a, it doesn't mean that particularly there are grants available right now. Like you said, there was a grant earlier that those neighbors did try to apply for, and obviously there is timing issues, funding issues, we don't really want to say that.
Yeah, they have the money, they spend it once in a while.
You have a scope of that mitigation.
I'm just curious.
Any other questions from council? Anything else?
No, I appreciate it.
There's public comment on agenda number four, Karen? Come back to the council's motions, Karen. Okay. I wouldn't want to do this, but I will. Move to a true resolution, R. 2016, next to a resolution from Mayor of town of Cape Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting an official fire multi-hazard mitigation plan. One, two, three. Motion made of second, Councilman Bunch? If it was just local, I'd be really happy with this, but if you know, why would you involve, you know, the trust, your, your, your ability, but you've got to do something to be, to be ready, and identify issues and everything, so. What, councilman, second?
I agree with Councilman Bunch, but not quite that to you.
Anything else from council? The councilman, those of you?
Councilman Bunch seems to know what he's talking about. Should we have any concerns over the question that council or the planning committee asked about the age of studies?
That's the most definitely we've got, you know. Most things don't change much. She's talking about new construction, change in floodplains, and those projects require on-site handling, and again, the engineers look at that stuff. I think we're more concerned when the 20,000 CFS comes roaring down Cape Creek Wash, or 8,000, or 80,000, is one of the issues that's really in the, in fire.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yeah, I think, I'm sort of good hanging on the ground on that. I'm not sure how effective an overall plan is that relies on data, which has been a decade old at this point. But that's where we are, we're not upgrading our flood plans, and we're not taking into account hard looks at issues where we had new construction that may impact our washes. I'm not sure that's the reason to know on this, because we need the help of the federal government, and this is the way we do that. But it does point out that perhaps we could do better job of updating our plans with new construction that comes on for ourselves. I don't think that's a total miss no more, but I don't know that warrants me saying, oh, I'm not going to, this is based on old data. It's more valuable to get help than than just anything else.
Anything else from council?
Maybe there's someone in the chambers that can answer. Do we have a FEMA maps are updated on a regular basis? Does anyone know when that thing is, 10 years or 10? So they're old.
For a point of reference, the town's real interface with FEMA came in 2005, when the Cape Creek complex fired, that was after this FEMA was framed. There's nothing else? All those in favor of the motion, please say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, council. We're going to move to agenda number five, council discussion and possible action to reconsider. The March 4, 2016, action regarding first reading of ordinance zero 2016 by theater one, amending the official town of Cape Creek zoning map by changing the underlying zoning of parcels 211-47-016A and 211-47-100. Describe exhibit one, and depict it in exhibit two from Desert World VR 89 to commercial bumper CD zone. The subject parcels are located just north of the northwest corner of Carefree Highway and 54th Street. Before the council tonight does a vote of reconsideration, which is an odd vote, it requires a motion and a second. Generally, there is not discussion on a motion to reconsider that I will allow tonight, so that everyone understands, or is no public comment. What a motion to reconsider does, if council votes in the affirmative to reconsider, then that which was voted on, it doesn't nullify it, but it puts a halt on that vote until the matter is brought back to council to be reconsidered once again. This item was placed on the agenda by councilor and planning committee. Council, would you like to make a motion?
I do.
No, I need a second, if you make a motion. Motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider the action taken.
I'll keep reading. You get a read, they have a read.
The March 20, 2016, regarding first reading of ordinance zero two zero one six zero on ordinance of the area council of town of Cape Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the official town of Cape Creek zoning map by changing the underlying zoning of parcels 211-47-016A and 211-47-100, described in exhibit one, and depicted in exhibit two from Little Desert World VR 89 to commercial bumper CD zone. The subject parcels are located just north of the northwest corner of Carefree Highway and 54th Street.
Motion has been made, agenda councilor.
I brought this forward simply because of concerns over the zoning for commercial application, and want to reuse the material again for multi-residential. This allows the developer to go through the process again.
Councilor, can I ask you?
I assume it's the Mariposa Project, the 12.28 therapy. And I guess I don't know where on that, because there is no presentation. So I guess we're all going to change the zoning application.
The horse always goes before the cart. There could be no presentation unless council has one, so.
Okay. So I agree with what Councilman Bunch is.
Councilman Misty? Okay. We'll move forward on this, and affirmative vote, a yes vote, is to reconsider. A no vote is to deny the reconsideration. Karen?
Councilman Esser?
Yes.
Councilman Bunch?
No.
Councilman Plancy?
Yes.
Councilman Lamar?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilman Lipsky?
Yes.
Mayor Plancy?
Yes, 561, the motion to reconsider passes. Thank you, council. And one more. I will actually go back to the beginning of the agenda, that would be agenda number And that is the first public hearing on the award of expansion on the term of expenditure limitation, home rule options.
Good evening, Mayor Plancy, and Vice Mayor Lamar, councilors. This is the first hearing on the following of an election to adopt alternative expenditure limitation. We're managing recommending the adoption of the home rule alternative, and physically next slide. We're required to do this because the state imposes an expenditure limitation under Article 99, section 20 of the Constitution, in the era S. 41563. This expenditure limitation is based on revenues that basically the state had projected for the town, since it's, since before it was actually a town. So, and then its adjustment for increases the population and inflation. And of course, because it was before the town was a town, it doesn't really fully capture the essence of the town in terms of its revenues and expenditures that are necessary to run the town. So with the state imposed limitation, there are several adjustments and exclusions, however. Next slide. So why do we need, we did it, why do we need an alternative expenditure limitation? By comparison, the town's FY 2016 expenditure budget is 17.6 million. With the, so my fifth estimate here, composition of the state imposed limit with exclusions is only 11.2 million. So you can see there's quite a difference. It's over $6 million. So it's only 64% of what was actually needed for the year. Next slide. So the state does allow for alternative options. Simply put, there are four major alternatives. The permanent adjustment, capital projects relation fund, one-time override, and home So just to give you a rundown on those options. First one, I mentioned, permanent base adjustment. It sets an amount that's modified according to changes in population inflation. This is appropriate for communities that weren't around usually when state imposed limits were created, but have very limited growth or no growth. The key advantage to this alternative is once it's made, you're not required to get voter approval again unless you need to adjust the amount once more, or if you wanted to switch to one of the other alternatives. Next one is a capital projects relation fund. This allows one time, for one time, and expenditures to be excluded from the normal limitation for one year. And if you want to use again, you'd have to have a vote in the subsequent year. This would be fine again if the town had limited or no growth, with the exception of a large project that can, could be completed in one year. The next option, the one-time override, is simply that it's good for one year, one time. Our expenditures, revenues are consistently above the state imposed limits, so this would not be suitable option for the town of Cape Creek. And then the last one, which is the alternative that we're recommending to take to the voters, is home rule. Essentially, with this alternative, the budget adopted by council is the expenditure limit. So this gives, so it, but it does have to be repeated every four years. Go ahead, the next slide. So the home rule benefits is that it's flexible, it's whatever the council imposes each year. There's greater transparency in that, once that's set, there are no exclusions or exceptions or adjustments to it. That is your, that is your expenditure limit. The other is the renewal period, it's not every year, it's every four years. And then it's used by 53 of the 79 cities and towns, so it's a very popular alternative. The town has operated under the home rule since 1999, and it's renewed it through election. And this assures that there's consistency between each year, and you can better compare one year to the next for a long period of time. So our staff recommendation is, management recommendation is to reaffirm the previously adopted home alternative expenditure limitation option. So this is the first two hearings, the next would be the next council session, and after that, at that meeting, we would ask that you motion to put the, put forth the item for election.
This is just for informational purposes, purposes, the seat, correct?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
I just have one observation, I guess, you're looking pretty sharp tonight. I already told you. Thanks.
Is there a wedding in the town?
I must have recognized you. I almost legal. There is public hearing on agenda number one. Do they wish to speak on this? Basically, this matter is the matter of council, and they know that council was made that it's set to be elected in August, in my flat hour.
Yes, correct, council.
We move to agenda number two, council discussion and approval. A one-year agreement agreement with the town manager between 30th, 2017. This is placed on the agenda of council, next to the council. This is the final act of the town manager.
Mayor, council, I've given a proposed funding agreement previous to the last, but we have a chance to redo it. I had one request received, was completed for one year, and brought up for one year.
Okay. There is public comment on agenda number two? Okay, back to council, Councilman McGuire?
Motion to approve the one-year employment agreement with the town manager from June 30th, 2017.
Second. Okay, Councilman McGuire?
This has not been an easy issue, but I believe what's best for the town of Cape Creek is to offer our town manager a one-year contract.
Pretty simple. I had some concerns, and I still have some, but this contract expires June 30th, so this year. You know, I felt, and I know I'm not supposed to mention the political climate, but there might be some changes up here. So in an effort to do the right thing, I agreed that this, and that's about all I have right here.
I want to support this, this motion. I do think of the issues that perhaps I suppose not want to bring up on the, on the content itself, based on the conversation we've had, and that might belong here at this moment.
Councilman McGuire?
No problem.
Councilman Lipsky? Close. A friendly amendment, Councilman McGuire, is the arbitration section, even stated in the contract. Except. Any other comments from council?
Some of this stuff I read, the page, the page six at the top, and forty, you're responsible for all of the defense for what we've gone from town business processes has been taken out. So I'm, they're just using the vehicle for everything, your personal reasons and everything?
Mayor, council, that has been the practice with the previous town manager and myself. I pay for all the use of my car, so now that I paid for the tax rate and least adding tax, I'm pretty used to the vehicle. I don't get it.
All for this.
I don't get it. I think it's all, how I pay for my ass, not use it.
I mean, took out paid time off and will vacation if they want to.
Excuse me, ma'am. We changed the town design recognized three for, if you may, when he's paid time off. Could be interim manager for whatever reason, use those terms in the town, has not used those term. So I just convert it to three and vacation needs to pay time off, which is what the town uses.
While I'm in the arbitration, I also break the table. Yeah, I know. So that was that.
Vice President. Yeah, I see that. Yes, page five, item forty-one. You're giving yourself a four thousand dollar raise, is that correct?
I put in for three percent.
Does that, do you think is that a merit raise?
I think it's, you know, a full percent. Compared to what the staff would receive during the period.
Need to speak into the microphone. I can hardly hear you.
Vice Mayor. That's all. That's one question I have. Anything else in council? Attorney General, please.
Counselor Bunch?
Yes.
Counselor of the presidency?
No.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
No.
Counselor McGuire?
Yes.
Counselor Lipsky?
No.
Counselor Esser?
Yes.
Mayor Fancier?
Yes, by a vote of three, the motion passes. Thank you, counsel.
Can I make a comment?
Counselor Linsky?
I think that the most consequential vote that this council could make was just made. I think personally that this town manager, while perhaps well-meaning, is, has proven to be not up to the job, not competent in the job, lacking leadership abilities, and basically an anchor on the staff as well as the town.
Counselor, this should have been said through the general.
Well, that's okay.
Point of origin, get a hold of your route voter.
Okay, well, yeah, we voted, and based on that vote, I'm going to resign my seat. And I'll give you a couple of weeks to replace me and be available to you during that period of time. But this is an outrageous vote, and along that shows, shows such a dis, that represents an incredible disservice to the town. I understand that this vote, that this passed, and that this town manager will continue to run the town as, as he does.
Thank you for your comments. Counselor, let us move forward to the agenda. Council discussion and approval of resolution on two thousand sixteen by Theater Four, finding certain facts of the adopted proposed general plan of town's CD, Arizona. In order that the proposed general plan be submitted to the qualified electors of the town of Cape Creek for the adoption, it has providing notice of the plan and a power sufficient to the vote and providing for an effective debate. We're starting the process.
Thank you, Mayor Lamar. As council, the revision of general plan was initiated in February two thousand fifteen during the extension application process. Input was gathered from citizens through public meetings held at town hall. The common post on town outside, two attempts were made to hold public hearings before the planning commission employee in May. The April meeting was canceled to allow for throwing, the public hearing was re-adapted for May. In May, the planning commission considered application for issues prior to general plan. Due to late hours, general plan is continued to a workshop on September tenth of public hearing December seventeenth. The public hearing was canceled to enable the commission ample opportunity to discuss the interests of the document from second without public approval. Planning commission commenced a series of six workshops to review and let no changes to the general plan. Commission started with two thousand five general plan, analyzed the document twice, making changes that range from grammatical to policy interpretation. The document is reorganized to facilitate use by the leader. Mayor, members of council, I don't know if you wish me to go through all recommended changes. The council has also had a workshop on making the norm changes. Those were provided to you and highlighted this thing back to the council for this public hearing. To the end, goal of this is to, the council approved the resolution which extended time to the general plan to hold a public vote on all this area. The council needs some time prior to notify the elections department, and I believe May second would be the last possible day to notify them. So this council may have a public hearing tonight, discuss the document, continue to legal for eighteen, and if need be, go in one day in the future if necessary. Any questions?
Questions from council? Can you give, Counselor McGuire?
Can you give us an idea of the amount of time that the planning commission spent in public hearings to revise this document?
Counselor McGuire, public hearing, the planning commission held one meeting. They considered all the other comments that had been proposed or given in the previous year in their workshops. So they spent, played, almost another ten workshops, here in this room, six, I believe, in total, hopefully about forty hours at least, between themselves and to go to discussion. And they have dropped the document to this council to consider, which this council has made as an recommendation.
From my observations, forty hours is a little long.
Okay, I mean, by the way.
Quick question, page seventeen. Cape Creek citizens funded the Delaware nineteen seventy-four to transfer ownership to one sixty eight, Mr. Ralph Son of the Black. Is that due? Is that? If there are no other questions for council, please move to the seats. This public hearing on the, on the, is Karen?
I have no questions.
Does anyone wish to speak on the general plan? Need a motion? Maybe we did receive a, an email from the State Land Department correcting page eighteen, paper one, week ago. Have we addressed that?
The State Land Department was referred for the second time in the document. They sent their comments back and we updated members, which is kind of critical.
So the document thirty-nine thirty-five, papers, we have down to seven thousand six thirty-nine seventh, they were handling, but that's correct, we're meeting five. Just want to make sure that guy. Listen, House of Counsel. Need a motion to start a council.
Motion to approve resolution R two zero one six dash zero four, resolutions of air and town council of town of Cape Creek, North Dakota County, Arizona, finding certain facts in adopting the proposed general plan for town of Cape Creek, Arizona. And in ordering that the proposed general plan be submitted to the qualified electors of the town of Cape Creek, Arizona, for certification and providing notice of the plan in such submission to the voters and providing the court.
Second, motion has been made on second question.
Several of us in the council at this time here, watching the planning commission working on this document, they know better than we do. The amount of work that they into this, the previous document, what is done by professional agencies, rather than being done through houses or, and having been done by citizens who are so dedicated to the community, I think we have the document far better fits the needs and desires of town of Cape Creek.
Counselor, time to share the second. So in a word, when there's always going to be little items or anything like this that people are going to disagree with, but I think overall it's very good that they got it. Counselor Esser?
I agree with what's been said, that it took nineteen years longer than it should have to produce this document. But the planning commission did an excellent job, probably best ever.
I mean, sat through it, know how much time it took. It was worth it. The professionalism, the thoughtfulness, the hours being spent on sometimes a single word and what it meant, that was discussed with great care and respect, with this group was astounding. And I know they asked me why I came, and I said to them, it was such a joy, it was like watching paint dry, but it was such a joy to actually watch a group of individuals be able to express themselves, treat each other kindly, and move through this with such thought, and each word was pondered and discussed without the interference of anyone on council or anyone trying to direct it the way they wanted. And so this document is truly out of the hearts of people who were caring so much about the town of Cape Creek and getting the words exactly. It was masterful. I thoroughly enjoyed it. Thank you.
Counselor?
I agree with everything that was just said. I think the document is outstanding and a book, found to reach it. Was, was done by people who didn't really care about the town and have a very big grasp of, of the issues. Happened to have had a, even a small part.
Vice President. We've had him settle the planning commission for fifteen years or so. It's one of the most thankless jobs in the world, we barely get right down to it, because all you can do is make people angry, or you really, you barely, very rarely get told that you did a good job, that some of us like what you're telling, complaining. But, you know, the document speaks for itself, and we will admit a little bit. But it was really a good, solid document, and I could tell that you really, really, really got down to coming to a consensus of what has gone before and projecting it forward for the next ten years. And that's, that takes some work, and it takes some time. It's, is like watching paint dry sometimes in the outside, but, you know, without citizens like you doing that for nothing, this town council is speaking hard, so I just say what else I can say. Thank you very much.
Watching paint dry is so bad if you're watching the council.
I left out some very important people and staff. Staff had a very difficult job, and I can't thank them enough for their ability to listen and those who took the notes with these discussions and then were able to transport it in a short period of time to support what was said during those meetings was absolutely amazing, and it took a great deal of time away from staff and the work that needed to be done. But you managed very well leading from back, sending somebody else in, and the ladies did an amazing job as well. Thank you so much for the group work and hard work. And I don't know how they did it, I'm good enough about it. It was amazing. Thank you.
Listen, House of Counsel.
I only echo Sister Fancie's comments. Staff did a super job.
I said that you can't say it any better, but I thought council people have already expressed assuming the council approves this, make this a mandatory vote for the final vote, and that's by the citizens. All those who are favoring the motion to approve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes agree with the habit, and your counsel, motion to adjourn.
So moved.